I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Budget allegiance. Budget allegiance to my.
Nice.
America. To the Republicans.
Hands.
One.
Foundation.
Under God. Individual with liberty.
Yes.
Wrong.
Barr?
Here.
Jovanini? Akoff?
Here.
Wallace?
Unmute, Bill.
Bill?
Here.
Pauzer?
Here.
Hicks?
Here.
Bradshaw? Myers?
Here.
Gaber?
Here.
Willie?
Here.
This is Jamie. I'm here. I'm sorry.
Moving on. We have four items on the consent agenda.
I'd move the passage.
Let's look those over.
I'd move the passage to the consent agenda, Myers.
Second by.
Second Barr.
Barr. Go call, please.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini? Akoff?
Yes.
Callis?
Here.
Pauzer?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item A. Is ordinance 2021-001. The sales tax referendum. Which we need to pass to be get on to the ballot in April. You want to talk about that?
Alan might want to talk about it. Alan Drew.
Yeah. Alan?
Unmute, Alan. Unmute.
There we go. Sorry about that. I was just talking away. Anyway, this is the ordinance in approximately the same form that was passed the last couple of times we put this on the ballot. And the only thing that's been changed about it is the dates to the election. It still provides for 1% municipal occupation tax and retail, excuse me, municipal service occupation tax and home rule retailer's occupation tax. The election is a consolidated election going to be held on April 6th. And the filing deadline for, well, the adoption deadline is tonight. So if it's adopted tonight, it is within the timeframe, but we'll want to file it right away tomorrow with the county clerk so that they can start preparing for their election. They indicated to me there weren't any other things on the ballot for the that are going to affect the city of Pontiac in the way of public questions like this. So this ordinance was approved by one of the attorneys for the Illinois Department of Revenue, and I've also provided a copy in advance to the county clerk's office, and they indicated it looked to be in good form with them. Since we're passing it towards the end of the timeframe here, I wanted to kind of get our ducks in the hole and make sure there weren't any there weren't any technical issues. So with that, turn it back over to you guys and see what you want to do.
Any questions for Alan? There are none.
I'd still move for the passage of 2021-001. Second Gaber.
Callis. Second by Brian. Go call, please.
Everybody unmute. Jovanini?
He's not unmuting.
Akoff?
Yes.
Callis? Pauzer?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willie? Willie?
Yes. Yes.
Boy, good job again.
Jovanini?
No.
Thank you, everyone. Item B is fire crush disposition, and the chief is with us. So Chief Campbell, give us the synopsis, please.
Before I get started, can everyone hear me okay? Or at least Mayor, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Including your packets this week, I gave an overlay of some of the discussions that have been going on within the Pontiac Fire Department. Specifically, since taking over as fire chief, I make it a frequent basis to meet with our command staff, which involves our deputy chief and our two captains with the concentration on talking about strategic planning. This year in 2000, or last year in 2020, our emphasis was on the apparatus fleet and evaluating what we currently have. Evaluating if those meet our current needs as well as trying to plan out replacing those apparatus down the road based upon where we are and where we want to go. Through those discussions this year, we took a look at our reserve engine, which is a 1994 Alexis pumper. It's been in service for 27 years, and we utilize it as a reserve engine. And the point of emphasis we were trying to figure out is do we currently need a reserve engine based upon our current operations and where we want to go? And over and over again, we came to the same conclusion that we no longer needed a reserve engine because of three points of emphasis. The first one is due to recent purchases by the Pontiac Rural Fire Protection District, Squad 66 and Tanker 1. When we were crafting those, we were making sure that they were multi-dimensional as far as operational capabilities and the equipment they could carry. Trying to eliminate some of the number of apparatus in our fleet. And since we've done that, starting in 2017, we've been able to become more multi-dimensional when we go to operations and less relying on so many apparatus going out the door. The second thing we took a look at was to see how frequently we were putting the reserve engine into use. In 2020, we never put the engine into use. That included when we had apparatus broken down as well as sent out for their annual inspections. So Engine 2 went on zero calls in 2020. So at the end of our discussions, after we met multiple times, we concluded that we wanted to approach the council at some point in time and request that it be put as surplus because we no longer thought that we needed a reserve engine currently or in the future. We decided that in 2020, but due to the many things that were going on with our department in response to the community and the pandemic, we kind of tabled it because we felt there are things that need to be prioritized at that point in time. Recently, I was approached by the Cornell Fire Protection District inquiring about the reserve engine and seeing if interested in selling it to them because in past practice, we had sold two engines to them within the past decade. I took that back to the table because I knew that was part of our strategic plan. I told them I would get back to them. They reached out to me several other times over the holidays, seeing if we came to a conclusion, and they finally gave me a price range of where their budget was, which was around $22,000. I took that information and assigned our command staff the responsibility of finding out how much our 1994 pumper would go in comparison to other ones that are being sold throughout the country, and the price range was around between 20 and $25,000. Taken in consideration that we would not be supplying them with any fire hose as well as the consideration that there were a few minor repairs on the valves, we felt that the $22,000 budget that they were proposing to purchase the engine was more than reasonable because it fell between that range that we found of 20 to $25,000. So I'm here tonight to ask the council to recommend making Engine 2 surplus as well as the recommendation for the council to sell Engine 2 to the Cornell Fire Protection District for $22,000. Over my career with the fire department, which has been 18-plus years, Cornell has always been a very reliable department. It's a very small department. We relied heavily on them for mutual aid specifically for structure fires. They've been a great partner of the years. And I know that we would be able to help them acquire a very reliable piece of apparatus for a very minimal cost. At the same time, our city would benefit because they do come mutually to us. So this engine would still serve our community when we had structure fires. So my recommendation tonight is for the council to first make Engine 2 surplus and second to sell Engine 2 outright to Cornell Fire Protection District for $22,000.
Need two separate votes?
That would be a question.
Kurt, I don't think you need two separate votes since it's sold to another governmental entity.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jay?
Alan, could you repeat that about the selling to a governmental entity?
Well, since we're selling to another governmental entity under the Illinois Constitution, intergovernmental agreements are something that's encouraged, and I think we wouldn't have declared surplus necessarily making arrangement with the with the Cornell Fire Department, but it's a good idea to determine it's no longer necessary for our use.
Have a motion to.
I would still move that we accept what the chief has found out.
Motion by Don. Second by. Second. Gary. Go call, please.
Akoff?
Yes.
Callis? Callis?
Unmute, Bill.
Hicks?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on. Item C is library. Correspondence, it says here, and some repairs. We have Kristen here, and she's got backup to Bruce, so if you could give us the highlights, please.
Yes, thank you. Just to start, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I am accompanied tonight, as Mayor said, by Library Board Member Bruce Kerner. And we are here this evening to humbly request assistance from the city on an emergency repair in the library. On January 11th, a fissure was discovered in our library elevator. This is in the main hydraulic jack of the elevator, and an emergency repair is needed on that elevator. Just to remind everyone, the elevator does serve not only library patrons, but Heartland Community College, who occupies the second floor of the building, along with Livingston County Workforce and MCCA. The repair caught the library board off-guard and unprepared for this significant repair because the elevator did pass its annual inspection with the Illinois State Fire Marshal's Office in November with no known issues or problems. And the, in your packet, there is a repair work order from Tissencrupp Elevator. Tissencrupp Elevator is the library's vendor, longstanding vendor for the elevator. And the cost of this repair is $62,292 with 25% of the repair due upfront, which amounts to $15,573, and the remaining 75% due upon completion of the repair. The total cost of this repair is six times the amount normally budgeted by the library for repairs, maintenance items. And again, because it passed its inspection in November, we had no idea that this magnitude of repair was going to be needed. And so again, we're humbly asking for some assistance from the city in completing this emergency repair in the library. I'm happy to address any questions or if Bruce wants to put in some information here.
I will put a little input into this if you understand a little more about this repair. We had a repair similar to this when I worked for Corrections out here. There is a very involved repair because the main cylinder has to be pulled out, a reboard, and a new cylinder put in because the old cylinder is slightly smaller than the new cylinder that is being made now. The importance of getting an okay on this is it takes eight weeks for the cylinder to be made and shipped here. And so that is a long lead time for these other entities to be down without an elevator. And the sooner we can get an opinion or an okay to go with this, the better off we will be time-wise because they say it will take 12 weeks for the entire process because they'll have to take the old cylinder out, they'll have to put the new cylinder in, then they have to realign the whole cage and things like that before they can actually pour the concrete floor back where the cylinder is actually at. And I don't know if you're familiar with putting elevators in or not, but you can't just use a plum bob to square them up. You have to use tele piano wires stretched tautly on all, in all four corners and all to both sides of all four corners to be able to get it square enough to make sure the cylinder will go up correctly and be able to move the car up. With this repair, this elevator should be good for another 30 years. These pistons fail without much notice. Usually it's the way it happens, and there's nothing nor forewarning on them at all, and that's just what happens. If there's any questions, maybe we can ask, answer a few more for you if you have any.
Kristen mentioned that there was a use shared by Heartland and MCCA?
Yes.
And also the workforce development group is up there also.
They, Heartland Community College leases their space from the library, and they have been allowed to sublet their space to Livingston County Workforce and MCCA.
And that's why they're involved.
But they're leasing from us, so basically normally repairs like this would be on the landlord, correct?
Yes. Because the elevator is part of the structure, which is on the landlord.
That is, that is currently the way the lease is written, yes.
That's correct, Brian. I have a copy of the lease. I looked at that.
I assumed. Just wanted to double check. How old is the? How old is that elevator?
It was, oh, go ahead. It was put in the library when the library moved from its original location on Howard Street in 1995. I, I believe the parts are dated around that timeframe. And when I spoke to Tissencrupp Elevator, they said that the main hydraulic jack of this library or of this elevator would last 25 to 30 years. And so, you know, with a new with a new hydraulic lift like this, we've got another 30 years of life. It's the most expensive and the main mechanical component of the, of the elevator.
Of course.
Yeah, I know, right? Somebody forgot to tell the elevator 2020 was over.
Kristen, the inspection that was done in November has no bearing on what we, we couldn't have found it on any quicker, could we? If there was any.
No, they do run a pressure test in the state inspection. And the, the pressure test, if it had failed, would have been indicative of a potential problem, but it passed with flying colors. I think, I mean, they ran some numbers by me. It was supposed to be 250 or higher, and it was somewhere in the 400s. So there was, there was no known issues at the time that it was inspected by the Illinois State Fire Marshal's Office in November.
Thanks.
I know it's not feasible, but what is the cost of a new elevator? Just to kind of compare what, you know?
Sure. And I did ask that question. The type of elevator that we have, we have a specialized elevator shaft because our floors are not the standard two-story building. And so a replacement of our elevator would run $95,000 to $120,000.
And how long would it take to get a new elevator?
That I did not ask. I would be happy to get that information for the council.
I would almost bet it would be take longer than it would do the repairs because nobody stocks these cylinders anymore, especially the ones we, this one because of the unevenness of the floors that they normally don't go as high as what we require here. So it's basically going to be a specialized to get the cylinder, no matter whether we buy a new, a whole new elevator or just repair this one.
And you know, this is a question that probably won't need to be asked for about 20 or 25 years, but since no one stocks the elevators, what happens next time?
It depends on what fails. I mean, if the cylinder fails again, it'd be going through basically the same steps as what we are on this one. If the car fails, the car can be put back together. But other than the car and the inside rails and the thing, the main mechanical part, of course, is the cylinder. And if, you know, you can't tell at this point whether there was actually a flaw in the cylinder when they made it. Just because of where, they can't really tell that until they get it out. So I mean, we're kind of in the blind on what actually happened, except we know that we've got about 30 gallons of fluid that's not there that's supposed to be there.
Bob, where would we expend this money from?
That's a great question. Let me back up a little bit and remember last year, the last couple of years, as the library came with their budget, they had a substantial deficit because of the improvements that these whole improvements that Heartland made to the second floor. So they're a few years away from getting the windfall of that. And so as such, deficits have run, what, about 40,000 to 50,000 a year?
Last year's was almost 75,000.
So so the first place you'd look is their operating budget, but there's nothing there. The second thing, place we'd always look at is TIF. That is a TIF eligible expense. They are in the TIF, so that would be my recommendation. That we go ahead and that would be the source of the funding.
Have they considered replacing the seals in the cylinder?
With a hole in the piston, the seals don't make any difference because the seals only go around the piston, but there's apparently a hole in the, in the, in the mechanism itself that in the, in the cylinder. It's either in the outside cylinder or the piston that goes up, and we can't tell that till we get it apart. Seals only affect the top and the bottom.
When they were, when they were here inspecting the elevator, they were able to get the car lifted so that they could see the mechanics on the underside. And where those seals are, Kelly, that you're mentioning, it was dry. So there was no indication that the failure in the piston was around those seals. It was actually further down in the shaft of the, of the jack and encased in concrete.
Will our lease fees continue to pay our, pay the lease payments? Are they use the stairway if they operational or are they?
The stairwell, the stairwell is operational, and I have no indication that they're not going to pay the lease. Their, their lease continues through 2024.
Okay. Say this, the Heartland has been a wonderful tenant. Again, they've really invested in that, that second floor. Getting additional users up there is providing more services to the community. And this is just something.
Fortunately for Heartland, many of the classes are virtual classes right now. That doesn't mean that they don't have students coming to the facilities, but they certainly don't have the attendance in person that they normally would at this time. So that is a blessing in disguise at this point.
We were approached by, by Heartland if we asked if we had any place that we could use down, they could use down here for, they have two ADA students that can't, need the elevator and to get up in wheelchairs, I assume, or carts or whatever. And we do not have any extra space down here because of our quarantining and our storage facilities down here. We do not have any extra space to do that. We did suggest to them that they might be able to get, get hotspots from the telephone, the the telephone people to be able to transmit to them at their homes. Right now, I know the, the cell phone people are offering these hotspots to students and to, to people free of charge because of the COBA thing. So that's what helped them out on those ideas. As far as the other two people, organizations that are upstairs, I don't know how, they have not expressed anything at this point, but I do know that they just completed the one for the MCCA, and it is handicap accessible, so they do intend on doing handicap people, and they have not indicated to us that that's what they need right now or not at this point either. So.
MCCA is doing all of their meetings virtually right now, so they're, they're not affected by this currently. I don't know about Livingston County Workforce.
Well, that's what we've done thus far. As I said before, the biggest thing is getting that cylinder ordered because that's the biggest lead time of anything we've got in the situation.
No other questions? We have a motion to authorize our assistance to the library.
Unmake the motion.
Motion by Jared.
Well, we ran by. Yeah, I'll second. It's cheaper than going new and sounds like we need to get it ordered. So I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Replacement of the cylinder for the elevator.
Sixteen thousand?
63,000. Motion by Jerry. The second was from Mike Barr. Or Bill Callis, I'm sorry. Go call, please.
Everybody unmute. Callis?
Yes.
Pauzer?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Myers?
I must abstain. I'm a member of the Library Board of Trustees.
Willie? Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Akoff?
Yes.
Hey, sure, you skipped me, but I'm yes too. Just one point of clarification, Kristen, and Just one point of clarification, Kristen and Bruce. Putting those, now we won't have the TIF.
I didn't, I cut out.
He cut out on us.
Thirty years from now, we won't have the TIF. So you're going to be on your own though, Kristen.
Okay, I'll work on that. Thank you. I appreciate everyone's help very much.
Yes, I thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Hang on. I didn't hear is the Madison Street plans. Brian Burton is with us. Brian, are you up to give us a little synopsis? Detailed, detailed synopsis, excuse me.
Yes, and and I think Mary has something she can put up on the screen so we can all see that. So we've talked about this before. Madison Street from Chicago all the way through to Oak. And there's few areas there, as you're well aware, that are are narrow. And even though it's marked as a two-way street or two-lane street, it really isn't in some areas. So with that information, coupled with this idea of parklets and dining areas, some of which we've had the misfortune, I guess, to try out, I think that worked. But unfortunately, the circumstances weren't what we were looking for to force it. What you're seeing here is down right by Eddinger's and Pano and County Market. This block here is basically where we would transition back to two lanes as as we would go to the west. And you can see that we still have our parallel parking. You may or may not be able to clearly see here, but we would take into account the spacing from the crosswalks so that we would have the space needed for the pedestrians away from that parking area. I think we lose a couple spaces, but it but it's fairly close to what's there now. We would have, I think, some opportunity maybe at Eddinger's if we did want to change some parking. But this one's pretty much staying the same as far as parking goes. If we go to the next slide, you'll see the next next block. And as we get into this block, we have a kind of mid-block there where that white car is. You can see a bump out area, and that could either be a dining area or a sidewalk with the dining up against the building. It's just kind of a an area that allows some more activity on the sidewalk, and and I know we've talked about this before. And you can see that even if we do bump that out, those parking spaces can be maintained if we go to a one-way street. And that that's on the north side of the street. The south side, we'd get a little bit too tight and probably have to lose those parallel spaces. Some of those, they're not well-positioned anyway with driveways and intersections there. And there's, I think, two, maybe three that are there now. So so it's not a lot of spaces, but we would be able to keep. I think the important thing is that we're able to keep the spaces in those dining or parklet areas that we do bump out. We can go to the next slide. We can see the next block. And really, what we're just kind of trying to show is if we did bump these areas out right now, kind of roughly where some of our restaurants are now, is that we can still maintain one lane of traffic. And the lane that we're proposing would be about fifteen feet wide, which is a little bit wider than normal lane. But with parking on both sides, you know, sometimes these vehicles stick out a little bit. And fifteen feet's pretty pretty decent area that we'd be able to get that traffic through there. And one more block here. So here, we'd still maintain parking on both sides. The south side really wouldn't change much. We would have an opportunity if we wanted to widen the sidewalk there, we could. The north side, again, we have kind of a bump out there by Acres Inn. And and we could do the whole block, or we just do these areas. I think there's some idea of a pilot program to do some of these first before we go full-fledged into concrete and permanent structures. And then the last block down here would would pretty much be the same way as as we've seen. Another bump out here is just shown where Madison Street Cafe is. And, you know, these could be put anywhere, or, like I said, could be the entire length. But what we wanted to really show here is that we could accommodate these these dining areas or sidewalk areas that come out into the parking, still maintain that parking at least on one side in all cases, in many cases, both sides, and go down to the one lane. And like I said before, some of these blocks are better than others, but if you get down by the movie theater, you really can't have two cars side by side now as it is. So all those factors together, we feel like this would would be very manageable and something that would be very doable for us. Obviously, we would have to do some restriping. We'd have to do some signage. But this is something we could definitely achieve. Any questions from anyone?
I have a question. I seem to remember, and maybe I'm wrong, that part of the reason for the two lanes on Madison Street was for delivery trucks to be able to be parked and for cars to get around them. On these blocks, because I know that it varies from block to block, on these blocks, would it be an issue for delivery trucks? Do we have delivery trucks that deliver here that would cause a blockage if we only had one lane?
I I believe there are delivery trucks from time to time. I don't know the frequency. What we would need to do would be to close this essentially for delivery trucks. Delivery trucks would then have to use the alleys or the side streets and come down the alley. I think some businesses now maybe prefer deliveries in the back instead of in the front. But that is something that would have to be addressed.
So what's our next step, Bob? Chris? How do we get this rolling? We've been talking about it for way too long.
Yeah.
The case would start working as soon as weather permits. Chris, you've been thinking this through.
Yeah, so well, the plan would be, I'm sorry, don't have a picture of it, would be to install the place I go fishing in Wisconsin, they do it kind of neat. They have big wooden planters that delineate the one lane at the end of each block, and it's really kind of neat how they do it. We would need to build those and obviously build the seating areas, which we could get on right away in the spring and get those put in. There'll be some some pavement striping that'll need to be done early as well. But I think we can get on it pretty quick and and that way, it's a temporary nature, and if it doesn't work out, we can go back to what we had. Just from what we've talked about, the staff meetings, that's that's the way we're going to attack it.
So do we need a motion or do we? Okay, I motion that we move forward with this plan.
This is Jamie.
And get it accomplished.
I second it.
What, Jamie?
Jamie, you had a question?
No, this was Jamie. I was saying that I was going to second, but I don't care who's second, so long as it gets seconded.
Amen.
Go call, please.
Howser?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Gaber?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Heckoff?
Yes.
Calus?
Yes.
I have a question for Brian. So of course, these plans make us DOT compliant then, correct?
Yeah, are you referring to where the parking spaces are in relation to crosswalks? Yeah, any anything we would do here to restripe these would take that into consideration, so we would be compliant.
Okay, it looks like there's going to be lots of space for some green space there too, so that'd be good. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
They remember that Chris reported earlier this summer, we've been having problems getting the paint machine going. So we're in good direction.
Okay, thank you. Like to see action on Madison Street, yes. Next on our agenda is the golf course. Bob has a presentation and a budget too, so fire away.
I'm going to stand up because the angle of my bifocals is better this way than it is sitting down. So I'm going to make this that this all might be a moot point. And on the way here tonight, I stopped and bought a lottery ticket. And I'll go on record right now, if I win a hundred, eight hundred and fifty million, I will build the golf course and endow it, so there'll never be problems in the future. So there's one in three hundred and fifty million chances that that's going to happen, but I have to report, I bought two tickets. So, you know, we'll see how that comes up. At the last meeting, we kind of talked about the golf course, and I just wanted to recap a little bit of that presentation to kind of set the stage for for the next phases of our discussion. You know, we talked about that the golf course was a community asset. And that is, well, I'll look at that more in depth. First is it's a recreational asset, that golf is a multi-generational sport. Small children up to old folks such as myself. And it reaches a demographic that we really don't have a lot of programming for in our recreational activities. Additionally, with the course that we're going to be purchasing is a swimming pool. And that's kind of a unique pool compared to the pool that we have at the high school that number one, will control the temperature. That the biggest problems we've had up at the high school is that for some of our recreational programming use, it's, the temperature is quite a problem. Of course, the high school controls that temperature, and it's got kind of driven by the needs of the the swim team. So we'll have programming out there away from all the activities, and so that's that's another plus to our recreational programming. Cart paths all throughout the course would provide walkways in all the season. And the also that there's a key part of our long-term bike path that that's contained in this purchase. You'll see the the purple path with the red in the minute. That's the, is that the, what's that path called, Taylor?
It's called the Elks Trail.
The Elks Trail. It starts at twenty-three. It heads west. The purple portion there from twenty-three, the city already owns. The red portion is on the Elks property that we would be purchasing. And the next mile, that that goes Deerfield Road, and then the next mile, the the city already owns. That was purchased probably twenty-five to thirty years ago for this very purpose, as well as to get utilities underneath the highway. When the state came through and was taking the bridges out on fifty-five, they proposed doing away with that cutout. And Brian and the mayor were successful in convincing them that that needed to be preserved. And of course, they have the culverts in there now with sufficient height for that bike path. This, of course, is a long-range project, but it will lock in this right of way. And we never know, as every two years, we have the grant cycle comes around for this. And so this will be one of those that will be tacky. And lastly, the property would provide another venue for community activities. Those of you who've been out to the Elks on the Fourth of July, that place is just warming with families having a great time, and we can see that being utilized. Taylor is brainstorming already of the potential uses for that. So so it provides a recreational asset. And then it also provides a community and economic development asset. There's a hundred and sixty acres of green space, which is which is very critical for a community. It's great use of the flood plain and the floodway. A good chunk of the property is in that flood plain. It also provides a venue for many nonprofits as a fundraiser, having golf outings out there. I I can attest that having worked for the one with the hospital, it's a lot of work to put those things on. But the payoff is significant for those not-for-profits. I know that the hospitals' revenue that they've raised for about twenty years now have gone to the EMS program in the county, training EMS first responders, providing grants to to those smaller EMS agencies of the county. Scholarship funds, various organizations sponsor scholarship funds with their proceeds. So it's a major avenue for fundraising. It's also important as we look at economic development, particularly attracting business and also for businesses as they recruit people, as they recruit professionals. It's also a avenue for them to entertain customers, clients, full outings with their employees. And lastly, tourism. A lot of golfers come from outside the area. And we anticipate that we would aggressively market that. We've got anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand people before COVID, traveling fifty-five or sixty-six on vacation. And we haven't captured captured a lot, not nearly what we hoped to, and this would just be another draw to capture those. Might say that that's, we'd also attract golfers from outside the area. And as we get more play from people outside the area, that will help keep the the costs down for local golfers, as well as providing opportunity for businesses to capture additional sales. I think it's important to note that economic development, that process of bringing money to the community, of bringing business to the community, bringing industry to the community is a and residents to the community is a very, very competitive process right now. Cities from across the state are all vying to attract residents, to keep residents, to attract business. It's even more difficult as we take a step back and look at the Midwest, some of the areas that are even more competitive. So it's really behooves us as a community to have as many assets in place to draw and maintain our residents. You know, the concept of a municipal golf course is not new. According to last time, that nearly seventeen percent of the golf courses in the United States are municipally owned. So I'd say, what's it look like in Illinois? So I, so I'd say, what's it look like in Illinois? And looked at Golf Link, which is a source for golfers across the state. All the stars indicate municipally-owned golf courses. And I'll say, it would kind of stocked up there at ninety. If we'd gone into Chicago area, get all of that area up there north of eighty, it would have been all green. There's tons of them up there. But municipalities realizing that golf courses are an important part of community development and economic development. So the importance of the, of the course to not only the community, but for the potential of growing the community, I think, is what has motivated the Elks to, to take the long, hard look at this. They've kind of said that they're not sure of their ability to maintain the course long-term. And after several meetings with them, I can assure you that their motivation is not to sell the golf course. The city's motivation is not to buy a golf course. The motivation of both parties is just to make sure that the golf course is maintained and is a viable entity twenty years from now. And so it's to that reason that as, as we were in these discussions, the Elks did not seek far fair market value. He said, we drew a series of discussions, said what, what's it gonna take? And they feel very comfortable in saying that the city can, should be the caretakers of this, that they're in the best position to make sure of its long-term time, long-term viability. We summarized, and begin to summarize exactly what's entailed in this purchase. It's roughly a hundred and sixty acres of land with value of over a million dollars, twenty thousand square feet of a clubhouse, hospitality area, and pool. That the hospitality area will be leased back to the, the Elks. Storage facilities, totally about fifteen thousand square feet. And all the equipment to ma, that helps maintain the course. And probably as important is they've already got an established base of players. And so it's not like we're having to start out at square one. And we're gonna be able to step right in and through our marketing efforts, hopefully, and again, all of that price tag, five hundred thousand. During the past few weeks, we've been working hard. And Alan's gonna go over the purchase agreement and the lease.
I am unmuted. Can everybody hear me okay now that I'm gonna be talking a little bit?
Yes.
Okay.
You said you're gonna be talking a little bit?
Well, depends on how much you wanted. I don't know if everybody, it was in the packet, right, Bob, the full agreement? Bob, was the agreement in the packet?
It was.
Okay. I don't know if anybody, everybody's had a chance to at least glance through it. I'm just gonna kind of run through it. If you've got it in front of you, or can pull it up on your computer in chronological order based on what's here. I started with, because it's primarily a real estate transaction, we started with the basic Livingston County real estate contract and worked from there. I just entitled "Real Estate and Equipment." Shows Pontiac Elks as the seller and City of Pontiac as the buyer. Description price area shows the price at five hundred thousand dollars and with a hopeful closing date of April one, two thousand twenty-one. And that coincides with the Elks dues payment year, which I think ends March thirty-first. The real estate, we have ordered a title insurance commitment. We ordered it from Frontier Title because they had done title work for a recent mortgage transaction, but there were a couple parcels that weren't included in that. So we've, I've got an exhibit that's attached, Exhibit A, that I think identifies all the parcels, but not necessarily full legal descriptions. And what's important is the city's buying everything that the Pontiac Elks owns, except those lots one and two in Pontiac Elk subdivision that were subdivided a couple of years ago. I don't know if people that know the back area there, basically to the south of Hole thirteen that are for sale. And those are not included, but the rest of whatever the Elks own is included. I mentioned we ordered the title commitment. Conveyance would be made by warranty-type deed. Possession, there's actually a typo in the contract because I, it still says March. We'd started there. It should be April, but there is a provision for the potential of the city taking early possession and operating it. Once the city had a financing commitment and the seller had approval from its membership at the Grand Lodge, which are both required. And that would be if we, for some reason, can't get the closing coordinated by the beginning of the golf season, the city could go ahead and work with the Elks and get started in the operations. Page two, it identifies personal property. Basically, it includes all the personal property that the Elks has for operating the golf course. That's their mowers, tractors, what, all those facilities, other than the golf cars. And now might be as good a time as any to say the golf carts are rented from a company and they're fairly new carts. The rental agreement went into effect in two thousand nineteen and provides for thirty payments and they're not due every month. They're due the months of May, June, July, August, and September. They're eight thousand six sixty-six payments. As I recall, there's fifty-six, fifty-six golf carts. And there's two utility vehicles, subcar gas utility vehicles that are included in that lease. So I, while we were having the meeting, I looked, it looks like there's been eight payments made so far out of thirty. So there's twenty-two payments remaining on that lease. And I've been in contact with the holder of the lease about the assignment to the city. So if the city acquires the golf course, they would be able to accept assignment of the lease. And I also contacted the actual owner of the cars out of Champaign to see whether it was possible to have a purchase option at the end. And they said that it was, and the option to purchase at the end of the lease would be, believe they said, twenty-two hundred and fifty-six dollars for each golf car. And I believe it's forty-five hundred roughly for the two utility vehicles. And they also told me that the city could expect up to a thousand dollars of expense at about that time for new batteries, which run about seven hundred plus. I think they're a hundred and twenty apiece for six batteries. And then just some general service. But they're not near at the end of their useful life at that time. But obviously, the city will have to have a plan for how they're gonna operate that. Going back to the agreement, attached is Exhibit B to the agreement is actually a list of the property. And this is the major property, not the small stuff necessarily, but the major property that's included, inventory provided by the Elks of the equipment. The Elks will retain the property in the area, the banquet area, meeting bar facility, all that personal property remain the, will remain the Elks property that's inside there. But the city will acquire the, the built, the entire building. Real estate taxes handled normally with a proration. And as of now, the real estate taxes are relatively small for that size of facility because of some exemptions that the Elks get for a fraternal organization. The city, as soon as it acquires it, will ask for a property tax exemption. And as I'll talk about a little bit with the lease, the property tax exemption can apply to everything except the portion that would be proposed to lease back to the Elks. We'll get to that in a minute. We're buying the property as is. I think there's been some due diligence done on behalf of the city in terms of looking at the irrigation system and what's there. And we've had a long time to take a look at all the, the condition of property. The contract's contingent upon the approval, the sale by the membership of the Elks and the Grand Lodge. It's also contingent upon the city obtaining suitable financing. And there's been, Bob, I don't know if you want to cover the, after I'm done here, maybe you can talk about the financing portion. The the, the lease is part of this. There's Exhibit C attached to the contract, which provides basically that the, at the closing, the city will agree to lease back to the Elks, the clubhouse portion, which houses the bar, restaurant, banquet dining, meeting facility, and the kitchen facility, subject to the terms of the lease that I'm gonna go over here in a minute. Then the Elks also have agreed that we can continue to use the name of the Elks or the Elks Golf Course in connection with advertising and promotion. I think there's some thought the course should probably be renamed in the future. But a lot, so many people's been to Pontiac Elks for so many years to have that ability to say formerly the Elks or it's the Elks, so people recognize the, the source. That's a really good thing. So that's the, the main summary of the contract. The legals, if you want to read those over tonight, it'll help put you to sleep. But it is everything but those two lots. The list of equipment is self-explanatory, but there is a lot of equipment there. I mean, that's, I think it's gotta be considered that it's maybe up to twenty percent of the entire value is, is equipment. And that's another thing that Bob indicated earlier. With membership and players that can hit the ground running, well, we also have all the equipment it takes to operate a golf course and get up and running. The lease agreement, and this was also negotiated specifically to try to be, meet the needs of both the city and the Elks Club. Primary terms, seven-year lease. Put a provision in so that it's subject to renewal and extension by mutual agreement, but there's no terms about any renewals or extension. That would be something that would have to be agreed by both parties. But I think the contemplation is if this is successful, that this lease might continue forward. The monthly rental is seventeen hundred and fifty dollars a month, starting April one. It will continue through two thousand twenty-eight, March first. Premises, the portion of the building, there's a, there's a drawing that was attached to the lease that kind of delineates the building. And those of you that have spent time in the Elks Club have kind of know where the delineation is, where you go into the bar from the golf hallway. But there's kind of a demarcation of the building there. That would be the line between what's rented to the, to the Elks. They would have the bar, banquet, meeting room, kitchen. And the city would own locker rooms, pool, pro shop on the, on the, I guess that'd be the east side of the building. As I said, rent's payable starts April one. The L S C will pay all the utilities. And if there's utilities that aren't separately metered, and a lot of them are, as I understand it, because the buildings are different ages, the seg, the segments. But if they're not, the parties will come to an agreement about how to allocate the shared usage. Insurance-wise, obviously, the city's gonna own the building and it's gonna have to maintain insurance on the building. The Elks is going to be required to have general liability insurance and the name, and drab shop insurance. And in the agreement we've got is a million dollars of coverage. Last, I have talked to the Elks, the last time we spoke, they were gonna check and make sure that was a practical number for them. And then drab shop coverage would be for the bar and liquor license. And that would be at statutory limits. Assignments, there's no assignments to be the party without approval, without approval. Property maintenance, the city's responsible for maintaining the primary structure of the building. The L S C's responsible for the interior decor of the premises and all the general cleaning of what they're leasing. So they're responsible for, if their walk-in cooler has a problem, they'd be responsible for that. That'd be one of their components. And the interior stuff, but the exterior, the roof, heating, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, would all be the lessor's responsibility. The Elks, we did put clause in there, the first two hundred and fifty dollars of a cost would be paid by the Elks simply to avoid issues regarding a small toilet problem or something. Elks to be responsible if there's some damage caused by their possession of it. Any alterations to the building, if the Elks wants to remodel, they have to get prior city approval. And anything would have to be done with, out resulting in any mechanic slings. Also, any improvements made to the building would become the property of the city. We have kind of customary default provisions about getting possession, notice if there's default on rent, that sort of thing. And then if you go to Section ten, special provisions, the, it sound, we did a lot of work on the real estate tax portion of this. When I mentioned earlier, the tax situation, because the city's leasing the building back to the Elks, that would make that portion of the transaction a taxable thing rather than tax exempt. So it sounds like the county would assign a tax number, do a tax bill for what the city owns, and a separate tax bill for the portion that's being leased to the Elks. And then the Elks has a special exemption for a fraternal organization. And as L S C, they're responsible for paying the taxes on their lease premises. And they will continue to file and maintain the ability to have that fraternal exemption. I think this past year on the entire building, because that exemption, the tax bills were less than a thousand dollars. And we're hoping as that, that's what occurs. Food and beverage service, that was another specifically negotiated item. Obviously, if the Elks is operating its facility and they have a bar and restaurant facility, they, it's a perfect fit for them to be able to offer food and beverages for sale at the golf course. And they're able to do that. If there's a golf outing or special event, food and beverages sold by the Elks would be subject to the payment of a ten percent of the gross sale proceeds to the city, unless we've got a separate agreement for that particular outing or special event. So basically, normal day-to-day play, no payment from the Elks to the city. Somebody goes in and gets a beer and goes out on the golf course. But if there is an outing or a special event, that service can be accounted for and the city would get ten percent of that. And the ability of the Elks to provide that type of service is non-exclusive. It doesn't say people coming in to have an outing or a special event have to use the Elks facility for that or have the Elks provide the food and beverages. Although practically, that's gonna work the best for any alcohol, for sure. But if someone brought in a caterer for food or whatever, that's acceptable under this agreement. Parking lot, shared facility, city's gonna maintain it and will coordinate usage if there's large events, so they try not to interfere with the other person's, the other party's use. We have lessor access, so we can obviously inspect the property at reasonable times to check on condition of that. We also addressed the issue of other common areas. If you've been to the Elks, you know there's the areas of grass around the building that go down to the creek and then further to the west. And there's a play area. And they set up sometimes a, like, where they have a wedding facility or an outdoor entertainment facility there. That would be a shared use area as well as the concrete patio next to the swimming pool, which often gets used for barbecues and that sort of things. The road, obviously, is another shared use, just like the parking lot. Golf paths, this was an issue for people that happen to live out in that vicinity or use a golf course a lot, probably aware of this. But there's a lot of use of the golf carts or the golf paths from residents of Fairway View in particular to traverse the, over to the golf course and to the Elks clubhouse by golf cart path rather than taking the roads around on one sixteen and Deerfield Road. And we've agreed that would continue to be allowable, but we, the city reserves the right to restrict or limit that use if it becomes an issue in the But we, the city reserves the right to restrict or limit that use if it becomes an issue in the future. And that's basically the uh, we got legal stuff, no mechanics lanes. Binding effect, legal action gets brought in Livingston County Circuit Court. Uh, and how notices are sent, but that's the gist of it, seven year lease, seven hundred seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, per month, starting April one, the city pays the um, primary maintenance of the building, the Elks take care of the interior. The Elks will pay the separate tax bill on their property and uh, we work together on the shared use areas, so. Anybody have any questions? Uh, there's a lot of stuff there, but it really. Is works favorably to both parties, I kept it relatively simple, so anybody can read it, we didn't do a thirty page commercial lease, for instance. Uh, but I think it is based on the premise that uh, the Elks and the city will continue to work together.
Thanks, Alan. It was rather concise, thank you.
No problem.
Uh. For Alan. We will not be voting on it tonight, but we do want to have. A final budget.
Yeah, put the slide up there.
Alan, can I ask you a question? Nevermind, go ahead.
Yeah, well, you go, Billy, if you've got a question?
Yeah, uh, the question came up, uh, a few of the council members are also Elk members. Do we have to recuse ourselves from voting?
I've, I've been asked that question before and in fact, uh, I've, I've answered it uh, the best I could at this point. I've given that a lot of consideration, I, and we talked about, um, I've looked at the fact that Kelly is an officer of the Elks. So she has, I believe, would have a direct conflict and have to recuse herself from voting. As far as a membership, there's such a nominal, if any, economic interest to the members, if the course were sold and money. The money wouldn't get divided among the Elks members, uh, that I don't think a membership uh, creates a legal conflict for anybody. There may be those that disagree with me, but I think that line, it'd be like if a church is asking for. Uh, a rezoning or a vacation of a street. When we did even Glow Lodge, which is the Methodist organization, we didn't ask the Methodist to recuse themselves. I think it's a very similar situation.
Okay, thanks.
If I can speak to that, I've known since the very beginning of this process that I would not be able to vote and I, I, I would not expect the ability to do that, so.
And Kelly advised me of that early on too, and I agreed a hundred percent.
Well, we've been working on this budget. Um. And this is, uh, you know, best guess, year one. Uh, and really year two. The real growth potential for growth that we have is on the revenue side. That's where this thing really has to grow and we want to hit the ground running, marketing. Uh, what we did to to set up the revenues on this pro forma is to kind of look at. You know, needless to say, the last couple of years have been pretty unique and aren't a real good indicator of the potential of the course. Having said that. You know, the, the last half of the year told not only here, but golf courses across. Uh, the Midwest have seen significant uh, increase in play. Uh, as people were finally getting out from underneath, um, being at home because of the fires. So we did this kind of go back, uh, three, four years, saw the level of uh. Each of these categories kind of plugged in those numbers, knowing that uh. It might take a year to get there, but I, I think that we're going to be pretty close. Uh, in terms of the revenue, of course, the golf memberships, that's the folks who buy the membership and that membership. Uh, allows them to play the course. For the year without additional fees. Cart memberships, the same same way. The bulk of the money and the bulk of the growth is going to be on the daily green and carts. Again, this is, this is reflective of between seventy five hundred and eight thousand rounds. Um, and and that will be our target. The range miscellaneous, we're going to be very creative in, in getting sponsorships. And finding other methods of uh, of support. Had some fluid discussions with the Homestead Trust and they're not in a position now to do anything because of. Their previous commitment to the city for this splash pad. That final payment is made in uh, two thousand and twenty three and they would entertain. Uh, multi-year commitment to help offset uh, some of the uh, costs incurred. And so what that will be, we're not sure, but uh. Will be exploring other options along that line. Uh, the net from the merchandise in the sale of the uh. Clubhouse fifteen thousand and of course the twenty one thousand dollars. Total revenues of four hundred and fifty four thousand. On the personnel. Kind of put together of what we figured it's going to take. Now, the one thing that uh, the past year, there was a tremendous amount of volunteer labor out at the, the golf course. And um, many of those folks have expressed an interest in to continue that. Uh, we will certainly do that, we'll also cert, uh, open it up to more members of the community. Uh, that are inclined to want to um. Volunteer not only uh, in maintenance on the court, but working in the clubhouse and other things. So we really hope that uh, there'll be some significant savings there on personnel. Ellen talked about the golf court cart lease, uh, that uh, would be the assignment of the lease that they presently have. That's their one for three of the year. Course maintenance includes uh, chemicals, um. The irrigation system and other aspects of the course. Uh, like to address the irrigation system, there's been a lot of discussion about that. Um. Jake Kincaid from our sewage treatment plant has uh, done some preliminary work on, on looking at that system. Uh, the pump house has been recently uh, upgraded. Um, he's confident that we will be able to supply a lot of the support. To the maintenance of that irrigation system, when you think about what's happening is is that they're moving. Irrigation system is moving water from one place to another place. When you go next door to the sewage treatment plant, it's moving water from one place to another place. And so the hydraulics, the pumps, uh, Jake is really convinced that we'll be able to provide some real assistance there. Which is uh, save significant amounts of money. Equipment maintenance, um, that's the vehicles, the equipment, um, the Elks has had a seasonal. A mechanic and still have had to um, contract on a lot of those repairs. Uh, the city mechanic would be able to assist in some of those larger repairs as well. Utilities, insurance, we did get a quote today, that's going to be a few dollars less than that. Um. Miscellaneous expenses and and debt service. Uh, I want to talk about this, that, that, that the perception has kind of been. That as we talk about purchasing the golf course for five hundred dollars, that there's going to be. Five hundred dollars exchanging hands, that's not exactly what's going to happen. The, the city is going to be uh, taking out a loan and stretching that over a significant period of time, fifteen years. So that the users of the golf course will also be paying the debt service. So, um, once uh, this thing turns on its head. Then the full debt service will be paid by the users, so the actual amount of. Payment that's going to be uh, from uh, city conferences, it's going to be minimal. In the long run, so as I mentioned, this is a fifteen year note. Uh, we have the. Bank of Pontiac has the present uh, note of the property. And they are have agreed to uh, loan in us the five hundred thousand, uh, two point two percentages. Uh, to provide this debt service again, that will be paid over fifteen year period. And the bulk of which will be paid by the users of the golf course. Particularly as those revenues grow and and expenses. Um, are going to grow, but I don't think they'll grow as fast as the revenues. Um, the users will be paying for the golf course, not five hundred thousand. Does everybody get that? You know, I, I think that that's a significant point. Um. See this year with this pro forma, uh, sixteen thousand dollars. Might be a little more, might be a little less, but for. A service of this size and significance, um, it's, it's pretty small amount. Compared to the community benefit that's going to be achieved. So that's kind of the financial end in a nutshell.
Question, comments?
Bob, can I just ask one quick question? Yours is like bar.
Yeah.
Say paid by the uh, the debt paid through user fees, that's your daily green and cart fees.
Yes.
Okay.
I was sure somebody was going to ask if he got a much better deal when he started out with that five hundred dollar purchase myself. Yeah, but it is five hundred thousand.
Bob, is there, is Jerry?
Yeah.
Is uh, is there room in the, in some of those buildings out there where we could rent space for people who wanted to bring their golf carts to them?
Uh, that, that's a great question, um. Let me do it aside right here.
Okay.
As we started working on the budget this year, uh. Chris has really been saying, I need more, more storage. Uh, and we were looking at an addition to the um. This public works garage out there uh, for a few hundred thousand dollars. Um, we think that utilizing some of the space here in a building that we have. Uh, one of the houses that we have at the airport, we're not going to need that storage. So. Certainly that, that's something that we could look at, uh, we'll need to negotiate with that with Chris. Answer your question, Jerry?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to, it's that way if people want to bring their golf carts out, their private golf carts out there, they could park them there and then whenever they come to golf, they could use their golf cart, that kind of thing.
Any other questions or comments? If I could just kind of. Put a bow on this thing. Um, you know, a couple of years ago, we started the Community Heart and Soul Process. Uh, and city council staff went out to the community, had focus groups. Uh, went to all the wards and. We heard a lot and um, you know, the, the one thing that we heard over and over again. Was. We need to focus on the community and providing things to do and activities. And we as a staff and I can speak for the city council have really taken that to heart. You know, the, the two value statements that was generated. Two of the five, two of the six. Really focusing on what we're talking about here tonight. Says we value the events and activities that promote an inclusive, right, vibrant community. For a diverse set of ages and income levels. Couple of things that are key in there is we value events and activities. And then we're going to say for a diverse set of ages. It's exactly what we've been talking about tonight, that, that this facility will provide. The second one is we value a parks and recreation system that provides. And. Votes quality recreation opportunities. Again, that's what uh, this thing is about. Um. There is going to be money involved. That when you develop community assets, it costs money. But the return is in terms of fulfilling those statements that we're talking about. Want to go back a few years when uh, we built the band shelf, if you remember correctly. Got a gracious gift from John McGlasson in memory of Judy in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. But. That didn't build the band shelf, we needed another two hundred thousand dollars to do that. And so the council agreed to do that and at the time it was talking about providing. A home for eight municipal band concerts. And the promise that would find other uses for it. Think about that, eight hundred or two hundred thousand dollars for eight municipal band concerts and a promise to do other activities. Uh, you know, year and a half ago, we started up the Rocket at the River series, which was hugely successful. Uh, last year, uh, we had under contract, I believe it was twelve concerts that were going to be top notch. And of course, COVID knocked that out, so we went ahead and we remember we had uh. Vito Funk Circus here and over four hundred people attended. So what happened? That was so successful and the crowds were such that the porta potties were not the answer for long term. So we invested more money in the restrooms down at Riverside Park. To create, to enhance the, the experience. Um. They not only cost the um. The assets, but recreational programming costs, very few of the things that we do recreationally. Break even, let alone make money. And so that's kind of comes with the territory of providing services. To the residents. That ultimately costs money. And I think that we've really taken the challenge from the heart and soul process. From hearing from the citizens, uh, Parks and Rec have really stepped up their game in expanding. Their um, not only their programming, but also the special events that they had. The, the light up parade this year, we had two mile backup. Uh. They, uh, I think are going to be to the challenge to really utilize uh, this facility to the benefit of the citizens. Um. Same way, uh, another community development activities, the concerts, those sort of things. We are looking to expand that, to provide those opportunities for our citizens. Part of this next year's budget is going to be really stepping up programming down on block fifty nine, south of the courthouse. Uh, again, to be able to provide those opportunities to our citizens. Um. You know. This is kind of a preliminary map. Over the next couple of years, things are going to change, things are going to come up that we didn't even anticipate some negative, some positive. Things are going to come up that we didn't even anticipate, some negative, some positive. You know, I go back to uh the mid eighties, um, old city hall. Uh, city was considering tearing that thing down. I can remember uh sitting in that meeting, just getting grilled, why would we do that? And I didn't understand what those people were seeing, that there is going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars of care to that place. But there was really no use for it. But yet, uh fortunately they prevailed and we did not tear it down. And little did we know at that point that would become the foundation for the whole tourism thing that has developed over the years as provide literally hundreds of thousands of dollars of uh tax revenue for our tax bodies. So we don't know what's going to happen. And again, uh, if we've learned nothing else from COVID, it's life is unpredictable. The important thing is that we have in place the assets and the resources to uh do the best that we can in providing uh those services and activities to our citizens. Uh, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Uh, questions, comments?
Hey Bob, this is Jerry again.
Yeah.
Could you comment about the, the value of part of the property adjacent to the road that leads to the Elks Club Golf Course too? I mean, that hasn't been addressed either.
Yeah, if you remember when we did, uh, when we uh approved the zoning for um Jimmy John's, um, phase two of that was going to be a um uh residential development of duplexes. Uh, we did say at that time, because the Elks controlled the road, that um they needed to find another access. And that was going to be to the east, uh, Jason, down towards the Sui Tree. Uh, that really doesn't change with this, Jerry, other than the fact that now we would make that decision, but I think that, I think we would be sensitive to the, to the traffic there, uh, but would certainly give us some more avenue to explore that route east. And get out onto 66. If that could come out of some process, then we'd really have something. Does that make sense? Anything else?
A lot to absorb in our timeframe here. I, I would like to mention that I did get a call from uh our former mayor, Bob Russell, and uh he expounded on what an asset the golf course has been in uh showing off the community uh to frequent visitors, potential businesses on down the line. And he thinks that we should do what we can to enhance and keep uh that process going. We've been fortunate, uh, we've had great success in the past, but as always, it's pulling together, working as a team that makes it all happen. So uh Bob did a lot of work getting this together for you tonight and you have a lot to absorb. I'm sure we'll all be getting comments uh over the next few days uh before we have to bring this to a vote. So uh, the other thing on our agenda right now is a COVID update, which is very good. We've entered into a new tier and uh the restaurants are back into uh a better position and bars too. Uh, I've not been getting the uh usual calls uh for two, two and three days now. Uh, have you guys had any comments to speak of? And Liz, are you handy?
I am, yeah. Can you hear me?
Please.
Yeah, so Taylor and I are going to kind of talk through a couple of things. Um, I'm sure as most of you know, uh, the governor lifted the tier freeze on Friday and we, our region, region two was immediately placed into tier two. And then two days later, we were placed into tier one. So we're currently sitting at tier one. Uh, just to see how those tiers and phases go, there's a little graph at the top here. Um, and then um our region, I'm sure everyone's familiar with, but it's this, um, can you see my pointer, my mouse?
Yeah.
Um, so uh that uh region two. And then um here's sort of just kind of touching on all the different settings and the uh things that happen between tiers. Um, as the mayor alluded to, the indoor service is now uh for um restaurants, 25 people or 25% lesser of the two. Um, and let's see, uh, we are able, cultural institutions, we're able to open back up the museums, um, actually under tier two, which we were on Friday, but we can open those back up. Um, gaming casinos allowed again under the phase four rules. Um, I know Taylor has a lot more as far as fitness classes, if you want to take that part.
Yeah, we, we've had a lot of changes in the past week, um, and it's all good. So we've um still going to be able to do our fitness classes, um, our gymnastics uh programs going over very, very well. Um, we have our learn to skate program. So all of our programs that are um participant based um in person, we're able to do those again. So that's really, really good. Um, even the, the skating rink, you know, we're able to, um, the max is 50 now, but I don't think we're going to get 50 on there regardless if we can or if we're allowed to or not. Um, so we've kind of capped that at 30. Um, so yeah, a lot, a lot of good things are happening, uh, kind of opening up for us right now, even as we're still in tier one, it's still really positive.
The other uh good portion of this is that we can have meetings up to 25 people in person now. Um, so I just thought I would point that out as well. Um, this is also an interesting graphic. So my understanding of this is that it's going to be a lot more fluid uh movement between the tiers and the phases. Um, there isn't that same uh announcement, wait a couple of days, it doesn't seem. Um, so I, I, I believe, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but it seems as though just as quickly as you can move up, you can go over here and you can move down. Um, I think it's important, we'll, we'll show this in a minute, but our region is actually really close to being moved to just phase four. Um, that's a potential for us as well.
I call it tier zero.
Yeah, tier zero. Um, so we'll just show that really quick where you get that from. Um, IDPH does update this website every single day and um usually about noon is when they update it. And from what I can tell when they're updating it, if you move a tier, they announce it and it's effective immediately. So um, oops, sorry.
Yeah, and that's kind of what happened with this one, Liz. You know, it, it, they just made the announcement, oh my gosh, hey, we're in tier one. It wasn't like, you know, in the past where, um, you know, hey, there's going to be an announcement coming Friday at, you know, whenever he does his meeting. Um, it happened really, really quick. So that chart kind of explains, you know, how much we can really, really change in, in a short amount of time.
Um, you can see the metrics here that they're looking at. So uh we are really close to that 6.5. Um, we're tracking in that direction. Let's hope we keep tracking in that direction. Um, our hospital bed availability and uh we don't want to get below that 20%. Um, also the ICU, um, and then the decrease, that's one of the metrics that can move you in a tier. Um, if you, they, there's a, a steady increase of uh COVID patients in the hospitals. Um, and then I think, hold on just a second, I apologize. Uh, so the phase four is where we're going at next, um, hopefully. And there's a lot more guidance when it comes to phase four. Um, you can see the business operation, um, to move between phases. Um, and then also what can move us back. And then, let's see, DCEO, I just like to point this out too. DCEO actually has a really uh detailed guideline posted for phase four. It's actually, if everyone remembers, um, pretty much where we were at most of the summer. Um, the other good news is I just read the whole state of Illinois is actually at our lowest number that we've been at since October 23rd. So hopefully Illinois keeps that with the vaccine and um all the mitigations that we've been following and, you know, just the washing your hands, wearing your mask, all that sort of stuff. Uh, hopefully we keep tracking in that direction.
I could just.
Go ahead, Bob.
We're in right now, almost to have meetings of 25. You know, we, we kind of, before we went into this, this dark phase, and it, that kind of puts it in a groove to us in that, you know, we've got 10 councilmen, the front table has four, that's 14, we have a few department heads there, even if we do cut back on that, that pushes us up towards 20. Really doesn't provide a whole lot of roof, uh, roofs there, uh, doesn't provide, provide a big cushion for uh public participation. We're trying to work through what would happen if we had too many people. So uh the, the next couple of weeks, we will uh be, be working on that. Uh, one thing that we, is I'd, I'd like us to, everybody, everybody available next Monday for our, for a budget workshop. Have you a conflict for anybody?
I can do it.
I can do it. This is Jamie.
Ellie's good.
Sounds good to me. This is Jerry. Looks good for Bill.
You know, and so kind of a couple of weeks behind when we started, and so I think that will really help. And uh, we can then kind of see where we're at in the process uh before we start putting in concrete to play for uh the first meeting. This is our, this is Taylor, our resident expert, along with Mary. Do you have any questions from the side, virtual side, or the ones that?
Taylor, Liz? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure uh moving, uh, it says here, uh, mayor's comments. Well, my first comment will be, I think if we're going to have the workshop, we will not have an executive session tonight. So after we get done here with a few other things, we'll be done. So that's a good comment. I know we like that. I did want to comment on the ice rink. It has been a joy to watch the kids and adults skating, and I think I've had more positive phone calls about that than anything else this last year. It's just been a real great experience. Uh, Taylor, I'm sure you've experienced it too.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of really, really positive comments. I, you know, I've heard of a little bumps and bruises here and there, but I think other than that, it's going over pretty well.
Three or four times I went there, uh, they did not have skates that would ever fit me. So that's, that's a good thing. So we'll go from there. Other than that, uh, we do have some public comments, which I'll get into in a little bit, but right now, uh, I just like to commend everybody for making the meeting and uh putting a good foot forward. Uh, city council comments?
Liz, could you take down that uh screen? Thank you, thank you.
Any comments from the council, pass on at this time?
Well, we're saving money, not having to plow snow and spread ice and salt. That's a plus.
To the administrator. Uh, is six o'clock okay next Monday night or you want a little later?
I'm okay with seven.
Is okay, or if you want a different time?
First train. Can we make seven? Would seven be too bad for everybody or not?
Seven?
I'm okay with whatever, Jamie.
I'm good anytime.
Seven o'clock at the Eagle.
At the Eagles?
In person?
Eagle Theater.
In person?
In person, yes.
Live.
At the Eagle Theater.
Does this mean we can't wear sweatpants?
What, who's wearing pants?
Only if you won.
Who's wearing pants?
Any other comments? If not, we have a few public comments that we need to read into the record. One is from uh Joan and Ed Lipinski, they sent me, which I should have read at the last meeting. Uh, it goes, uh, they read with interest the news owner and the rationale of the city to spend 500,000 of taxpayer money to purchase the Elks Club and golf course for the city of Pontiac. They have a few questions. While golf is for all ages, recreational activity, how many people present at the golf course? What projected number of people will be using it? What is the estimated income from this or the additional walking paths established in this area at what cost? Will these be available free of charge? Will they be accessible? Will the required restrooms for this area be provided at what cost? Are there safety issues, lying golf balls accounting for these ball paths? Uh, and have limited time availability? What is predicted schedule for completing the bike path? Were considerations have been made for entering and exiting traffic from the club area? Will there be a safe pedestrian access to the entrance? Have the condominium residences been included in the discussions of their interests considered? Basically, what are the numbers for the benefits you envision? What losses has the Elks obtained? What are other community golf course profits? How many more jobs would this create? What are community nonprofit incomes from golf course audience? What number do businesses and the GLEDC have to show how this would be benefit to the community? How do you plan to include local businesses in benefiting from the investment? Have you considered or would you consider referendum to allow voter input on this issue? While we see the benefit of the early consideration of preserving the property, as some properties have been lost to the community in the past, we would like to see more research, more public discussion on this topics. We await response on these questions and hopefully will be publicly addressed. Again, that was head of Joan.
If I could just address a few of these things.
Sure.
Um, number one, I think we went over some of these. Um, we talked about the income, uh, the users, the number of users. I don't think there's any way we can tell how many unique uh users there are, but we do have that idea of the uh, based upon what we project of the revenue to be from the daily fees. But we talk about the cart paths, those are We talk about the cart paths, those are already in existence. And those would be basically during non-golf hours. There are some people, as I understand, that live out there that in the evening might go over to a golf land. But I would envision that more at this time of the year where there isn't a conflict with golf. As I mentioned before, all of this stuff is going to evolve. In terms of the bike path, it's totally dependent upon a revenue source, which is in all likelihood will be grants. In terms of the entrance and exit, that's not going to change. Hopefully there's a little bit more activity, but I, it's not what the condominium owners envisioned if that area next to them was developed. And we'd certainly, as we look at that, they would be a part of the discussions. In terms of quantifying how businesses are going to benefit, they will benefit, A, by a strong community. They will benefit by bringing people in from outside the area to spend money in their establishments. I think we kind of went over those things, the whole community of benefit. In terms of the nonprofits, as I mentioned, we do not know what each nonprofit made. All I can tell you is, is I related to, they are a lot of work. And if they weren't raising substantial money, they wouldn't be going through the process of having a clubhouse. So I think that kind of, it's most of them.
So, thanks a lot. Second inquiry we had was from Steve Durham, Pontiac resident. The mayor and city council, he wrote, "Good evening. I'm just writing to you to voice my concern that the possible city taxpayer purchase of the Elks Club, I do not believe it is a good venture, as I believe it will become a money pit for taxpayers. It is such a good idea, voiced at the last council meeting we listened to. Why doesn't another private group purchase it? We taxpayers are not here to bail out failing businesses, especially a private club that has been failing for years. I am totally against this idea." Steve's received other responses back and we, we appreciate all opinions and hopefully we have a good idea of where we're going. The last one that I have here is from Casey Hicks. "I have been a citizen of Pontiac my entire life. I have also worked at the Elks when I was in high school and some after college. I do not, I do not believe it is in the best interest of our city to purchase the club. They have never wanted the public's help before, why now? They wouldn't even let me as an employee golf for free because I wasn't a member." They are a, they're as cheap as possible. They have no true follow through in the kitchen on safety and cleaning matters that if you are not a member, they don't count. The city will be, the Elks bail out for what they can't handle due to their own weight. I am sorry, but I can't bully the public all these years with, you're not a member and then expect help. Sorry that, sorry that now how it goes. The city follows through with the purchase. It shows our citizens that we don't matter if we don't have a pocket. My citizens are screaming for change, this is not it. Honestly, who wants this other than people connected to the Elks? It may not be failing if the community wasn't shunned the way. Sorry, there's no bailout for me if this runs my life the same. So no to the purchase of the Elks. I also think that few members that are on the board and have property on the court should not be allowed to vote. Control the show here. They are both, are in both sides of it, and I don't think that's an issue. There are a few. Thank you, and I hope success for the town, but not by something to the citizens. Thank you. Those were the only ones that came through for publication. Not publication, but to be read tonight as public comments. And everybody deserves a voice and they're welcome to their opinions as all the citizens are. And we welcome all the public input that we can get on every issue. With that, having no further business, I would take the motion to adjourn. Motion by Hicks, second by Frank Jovanini. Do you have to do a roll call? We are adjourned.